All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the May 3, 2011 Mason City Council meeting. Call upon the�owers coming out of closed session. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. On the agenda, we're going to take from the 19th to 418th. That's cargo for micro enterprise. Is there a motion to second without the agenda?
So move.
For second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. All right, we've got three items of special business here. And the first one is a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week, EMS. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital bulk of service, whereas members of Mason City Fire Department are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas emergency medical service providers have traditionally served as a safety net of America's healthcare system, whereas emergency medical services teams consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, dispatchers, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas members of emergency medical service teams makes city engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Whereas citizens of Mason City benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals, whereas the injury prevention and the appropriate use of EMS system will help reduce national healthcare costs. Whereas it's appropriate to recognize value and accomplishments of the Mason City Fire Department, as well as all of the other emergency medical service providers in Mason City. Now, I R. Bookmeyer, Mayor of Mason City, Iowa, in recognition of EMS personnel who make our lives and safety their mission to do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th to 21st, 2011, as Emergency Medical Services Week. I encourage all within our community to observe this week, corporate programs, ceremonies, and activities. We'll have Chief Laskin up next up. Thank you. Number two. It's National Preservation Month. Reads as follows. Historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, whereas revitalizing neighborhoods fostered, localized, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. Whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in their lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that shaped us as people. Whereas celebrating America's treasures is the theme of National Preservation Month 2011, co-sponsored by the city's Historic Preservation Commission and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. I R. Bookmeyer, Mayor of Mason City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 2011 as National Preservation Month, call upon the people of Mason City to join their fellow citizens across the United States, recognizing and participating in this special observance. Does anybody have John Gronnig here? Put his hand up. Just give him a round of applause. Number three is National Police Week. To recognize National Police Week 2011 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers still in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Mason City Public Police Department. Whereas some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas since the recorded death in 1791, over 19,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed on line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls in the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas 317 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 153 officers killed in 2010, 164 officers killed in previous years. Whereas local candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year at Music Band Square, May 16th, 2011, at 7:00 PM. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Eric Bookmeyer, as Mayor of Mason City, formally designate May 15th to 21st, 2011, as Police Week, the city of Mason City, publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. I want Chief Laskin. Please give him a round of applause. All right, now's the time for public input. We allow public input on agenda items only. Content may need those items to state the item that you wish to address, and your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. The clock is up here, out right out front.
I'm Sandra Sementes. I live at 1213 Sixth Street, South West here in Mason City. And I'm going to talk about the one number seven. I mentioned this a couple weeks ago in front of the council, but I'd like the public out here to realize that I am the individual that has been talked about...
Ms. Sementes?
No, and asked about when it comes to do with Human Rights Commission. I want to talk about how they're talking about me personally because they asked the mayor...
This is a nomination for Dan Conley of Civil Service Commission.
Well, what I'm going to talk about is for the appointments and boards commission. This is what I'm talking about. People are asking me what I have done or what I have said that makes them question whether I should be on the Human Rights Commission.
Ms. Sementes.
I just want to know, I want people out there to know that I have never said anything or done anything or personally ever met the mayor. I have never met him on a personal basis for this to happen, okay? I just want to make it very clear that I have not done anything or have anything for people to ask me why he doesn't have me as a commissioner.
Mayor, before she's removed, could I ask a question? Could I have a legal opinion on this?
I did, I'm not asking her to be removed, I just wanted to see, see. When we talk about, excuse me, just a second. When we talk about number seven, the only person on there is Mr. Conway, and his nomination is Civil Service Commission. That's the only order of business that there is. Go ahead, Mr. ...
The agenda item just says, "Mayor recommending approval of appointments and boards and commissions."
And it says very clearly within the packet that Mr. Conway is the only person on the agenda that makes it...
I don't have a packet.
The packet's been posted on the internet.
Hey, point of order, that's enough. Thank you. Just to be clear for the public, okay? The packet is always published at masoncity.net. You can go under, it's your government, down to Mayor and Council, and it says Council Packet, so. And we'll try and continue to mention that as we go forward. Let's try and run the cap of the meeting here. Ms. Girk.
Chairman Girk, 1152 East State Street, North Iowa. I'm here tonight, as I was in January, to speak about number 11 on consent agreement resolution authorizing temporary closing of the public gates. Four times in 21 years, on the morning of that festival, I've had my electricity cut early in the morning, and it's not able to be fixed until after 2:00 because we have closed of the way. There's not a reason in the world for a police officer to order the electricity to be cut, which costs approximately $700 because you're paying overtime runs a Saturday. Lightning has not hit it. My electrician has firmly worked for a line, and a line comes out. All that needs to be done is a barricade to be put up, which is out there. The electricity isn't sparking, it's all grounded. I have electricity until it's ordered to be cut, and a line is reluctant to do it. But once they have an order from a police officer telling them to cut twice, it's then the same police officer, police officer who's not on patrol and who has now been promoted to command status. No city has ever reimbursed me, no police officer has ever tried to find the person that tears the thing down. It's a scam, and there's always a certain set of circumstances. Now, there's a report that comes in at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning on 19th. Well, it's reported as 19 Southeast, what we use for it, but this is not such an address as 435 is. One of the councilmen and I both know, since we grew up in that area, the fire department always promptly responds. It's 19 Southwest, and I have been at home, unfortunately, I wasn't able to handle that. Now, there may be lightning that hits that area, but it's not lightning at our place. Nobody can ever tell me who's called into the police department. But all throughout the day, people, even though I'm the only person on that line, telling me that the garage door opened, their computer broke, and my electrician in a line has certified that there is no problem out there that needed to be, electricity needed to be cut. It's simply that somebody has torn and loosened, and so it's sagged a little bit. It's not done in the street parts, sparking is not, and it's all grounded. Last year, I had approximately 25 people in my front yard, not invited by me, who wanted shade. They weren't in the parking driveway, they were in my front yard. They'd come and tarp their area during the night, which suffocates the grass. Apparently, because I wasn't there the year before, they decided, they bring, they claim that they have family member that needs shade, and they tell me, "It will be okay for us to sit here." That's not asking permission. They then proceed to invite anybody that comes along and away. Then they go home and bring back coolers of beer. I bring back a dog that's not leashed. All of this along the freeway. No city official, nobody from the Chamber of Commerce, nobody recommends them. I was just waiting for the dog to leave me a little present until it happened. Contrary to, now, one of their friends did say thank you at the end, but at the very end, he's, "Well, the relative that was supposed to be on oxygen that was in a wheelchair never showed up. I doubt she had insisted." I doubt if you went to their house on the 4th of July.
Mr. Mayor, it's not fair to let this continue in light of what, the way Ms. Sementes was just handled. The item on the agenda is temporary street closings, and she's complaining about people in her yard.
Yeah, she's...
To close those streets, people are only allowed to watch band festival.
Ms. Girk, I'm going to recognize the point of order, so. Thank you very kindly.
There will be no band festival past my house. You pointed the card in the end, and we have it listed.
Thank you, Ms. Girk. All right. Thank you for the point of order. Mr. Dorfler.
Yeah, Steve Dorfler, Three Bittersweet. And just want to preface my comments by saying that I'm the president of Belkrapf, also serve on the Mason City EDC and North Iowa Corridor. And mainly here, as a businessperson, not so much from the EDC or North Iowa Corridor, but I wanted to speak in behalf of the Micro Enterprise Initiative. I just wanted to encourage everybody on the council to get behind this. I think as a businessperson, I think it's good for the community. We're looking at ways of enhancing business, adding jobs, adding revenue for the community. And I know as a businessperson, it's really, it's quite challenging. There's a number of compliance issues to deal with. You end up spending a lot of your time just on administrative issues, let alone the ideas or the marketing ideas to take it to the marketplace. Our company is pretty fortunate in the area that we've got a lot of, a lot of great people. We're 75 members, and we're an international business. But we've been down this path as well with ideas that are dead ends. And in fact, actually, we've invested heavily back in 2000 on RFID, which is now just beginning to return course. Hundreds of thou, over a million dollars we've invested in this. And I can, all I'm saying is that, how does this relate to micro enterprise? Well, it's a big investment out there for many people. For us, it was a huge investment. It's a risk, it was a huge risk for us back in 2000. Fortunately, it is paying off for us right now. It's going to represent about 17% of our business this year, and it'll continue to grow. So the risk was huge, the reward is better. And right now, we're employing six people dedicated to RFID. And what I'm saying is this same kind of model can work for the small businessperson that doesn't have the resources. And the Papa General Center has excellent resources out there. And I look at this, and I look at it as just a very small risk. You know, money-wise, we are looking at a very small risk, but what could the reward be? Well, the reward could be that perhaps we develop somebody that has a great idea, a great concept, and they lead into five or 10 jobs 10 years down the road, or five years down the road. And I think that is, you know, that's the advantage of this. What is the risk? The risk is it doesn't, it doesn't work. But what's the money? What's the investment for this risk? It's pretty minimal, the way I look at it. So I'm just saying, I just, I would encourage you to take an active look at this. It's, in my way of thinking, it's a great program. I know we're always talking about jobs, jobs, jobs in Mason City. And to me, business retention and, and growth is a big part of keeping businesses moving. But also developing those small businesses that you can connect into the area, connect into North Iowa. And guess what? When they start growing, they're going to stay here. So I think it's a, it's a great opportunity. We're always looking for the businesses that come into the, into the area. Those are always the plums. If you get those, the wadlogean it is, you get pretty lucky from an EDC perspective. But if you look at the DRE and look at developing some of these great concepts that could come out of the community, to me, it's an advantage. So with that, I'll close. I appreciate you. Let me say a couple words on, on this micro enterprise, because as you can tell, I'm a big, I'm a proponent, especially being in business. And I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much for letting me have a couple minutes here.
Thank you. Come out, Mr. Gronnig. All right, we'll move on to the agenda. We'll read it first here, and we'll check for any items that need to be pulled. Number four, minutes. Number five, claims. Number six, permits. Number seven, Mayor recommending approval of appointments and boards and commissions. Number eight, administrator recommending approval authorization to send out RFPs with financial advisory services. Eight A, administrator recommending approval authorizing the city administrator to send a letter to Bernie Loewen Associates, stating the city intends to retain the services of Bernie Loewen Associates and First Administrators Inc. for the administration of the city employee health insurance program subject to the city council approved contracts with both parties. Eight B, which is an addendum, administrator recommending approval to submit Dennis Ritter claim to ICAP to amount of $1,000 for the removal of a shed and the moral obligation to pay benefit insurance coverage. Nine, administrator recommending approval resolution levying assessments for charges on certain properties and certification of Saint, to county treasurer for collection. Number 10, administrator recommending approval authorizing notice of bidders fixing amount of bid security and ordering clerk to publish notice and fixing a date for receiving Saint for a public hearing on plans, specifications, formal contract, and estimate of cost for destruction of East Park's ban shell exterior restoration project. Number 11, administrator recommending approval resolution authorized temporary closing of public waves for North Iowa band festival. Twelve, administrator recommending approval resolution authorized notice of bidders fixing amount of bid security and ordering clerk to publish notice and fixing a date for receiving Saint for a public hearing on plans, specifications, formal contract, and estimate of cost for destruction of 2010 CDBG disaster recovery, sanitary sewer repairs. Number 13, administrator recommending approval resolution setting date of hearing to fiscal year ending June 30, 2011, budget range with the city of Mason City, Iowa. Fourteen, administrator recommending approval of 2008 A resolution accepting warrant to deed from 6397 Street Northeast. B, resolution accepting warrant to deed from 1200 Medical Drive. And C, resolution accepting warrant to deed from 157 North Crescent Drive. Fifteen, administrator recommending approval resolution authorized the mayor to execute amendment to the option agreement with accessible space. Inc. can approve the amendment dates of the option agreement by six months and to make application for 14 units instead of 10. Number 16, administrator recommending approval of library renovation project resolutions, approving the change order with Holland Contract and Council. Are there any items that you'd like to pull? Mr. Weaver?
Eight A.
Did you say eight A?
He said eight, eight A.
Yeah, I was going to ask this. Yep, my bad. Anybody else down here? Ms. Silver?
Eight B.
All right. We'll entertain the motion to extend agenda with the exception of eight A and eight B.
Take a vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Anyone want to roll call? All right, two more.
Marsters?
Yes.
Tarquess?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Pinky?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you, council. We'll go to number, we'll go to eight A.
So move.
We have a second on that. All right, I'm going to read this here, just so everyone knows what's going on here. Eight A, administrator recommending approval authorizing the city administrator to send a letter to Bernie Loewen Associates, stating the city intends to retain the services of Bernie Loewen Associates and First Administrators Inc. for the administration of the city employee health insurance program subject to the city council approved contracts with both parties. Mr. Weaver, you made the motion.
Yeah, thank you. The reason I pulled this is, is several citizens, residents of Mason City, have asked me to ask you and Mr. Trout if there's any conflict at all with city hall staff members, our council members, does anybody do any business with them? Is there any benefit to this change? And I said I wouldn't. So there's an explanation that we should...
As far as I know, there are no connections with anybody in the city or council related to Mr. Weaver.
That does any business with him?
Not that I know of. We have our own, we have the health, our life insurance policy is currently with them and has been for two years. Two or three, or something like that.
I think you said four.
Four, okay.
Well, then I'll take your word for it.
That's to my op, that's all I, I don't know.
Anybody else, Mr. Weaver? Okay. Anybody else on this matter? Ms. Silver?
I do work for Corcoran and Associates, and our commercial people do work with Bernie Loewen Associates, but I'm not affiliated with that, just to make this perfectly clear. I do know who these people are, but I personally do not work with them, never have.
Anybody else on this matter? Thank you, Ms. Silver. All right. Say none. Clerk call a roll on eight A.
Weaver?
Yes.
Marsters?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Pinky?
Yes.
Tarquess?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Eight B is the addendum. I'll read that before we entertain the motion. I recommend approval, approval to submit Dennis Ritter's claim to ICAP to amount of $1,000 for the removal of a shed and the moral obligation to pay benefit insurance coverage. Is there a motion?
Well, I would make a motion to postpone this until June 7th. And the reason I would like to do that is because some things have come up since I talked to city administrator Trout about this on Friday. And I do believe that we need like a work session to get a policy together to work with any future claims in regards to this type of...
So if I hear you correctly, the motion is postponed until what date?
June 7th.
June 7th, pending a workshop.
That's correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this, Ms. Silver?
Basically, again, I'd like to reiterate that I do believe that we need to work as a council, get together a policy, be informed as to what our insurance will and will not cover, what the limitations are, different things like that. Because from Friday until today, I learned quite a bit about this. I'd like everyone else to be informed as well.
Ms. Weaver? No, I'd like to hear you. Say, say it out.
Okay. Well, one of the things that I think we looked at was this type of insurance is something we've never had as a tool for. And we have a number of claims that come to us that are similar to this one, where we have an individual that makes a claim, is denied by the insurance company, yet through discussions that that individual has with council members and staff, we look at it and determine whether or not we would be willing to assist them in receiving some costs or what occurred to them. We have a number of these types of claims, and I think that this change would probably give, would give me some time to pull some numbers together based off the past claims, what we've done in the past, and look at what type of things we would have. So you would be aware of the history of what kind of claims we've had that would exist probably in the foreseeable future, so.
And before we go to Mr. Weaver, Mr. Trump, you made the second. Do you have, do you have anything to add?
Well, yeah, I had, I had concerns with the specific agenda item as it was presented. And I guess foundational to those concerns is an absolute support of us having a work session and trying to establish some kind of a policy before we start paying out against this new insurance coverage, moral obligation insurance coverage, and then setting some precedent that maybe we would have avoided had we had a work session and thought things through a little bit more. And I realize that this is pretty broad, and it may not be possible to be all encompassing. If nothing else, perhaps we can, we can establish a procedure by which we will consider the potential merit of claims such as this. So I think, I, well, absolutely, I support the motion on the table.
Ms. Weaver?
I don't support the motion on the table. I was given information at the rest of this last week from Mr. Trout. I read through it, and I understood it. I talked to Mr. Trout late Friday, and you put it on the agenda, and I, I don't know what's, what's the discovery between 2:00 on Friday and now, I'm not sure what it is.
Well, I, as I stick behind my recommendation, I think we should consider this type of claim. I think that we have a history of, and I deal directly, a lot of times I end up with these individuals back in my office, and we start looking in detail as to what type of claim they had. You start looking at, well, we have a duty according to the law, but is it our responsibility because we have a role in that that maybe we do want to try to...
So in what you're saying is you made a mistake putting it on last Friday?
No, I don't think so. But I think through some things that other council members, they feel uncomfortable with pursuing it further, and that's what I'm hearing here. I don't have a problem with considering this in the future at all, but I want to make sure, obviously, part of my role is if there are questions of others, I need to make sure that everybody has the information, and that's what they're asking for, more information. So I stand behind considering this for a recommendation for approval, but obviously they're wanting...
I can support that tonight, that you're standing for approval on it. And I'll be glad to have the workshops and learn other things that you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Marsters?
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm for just moving this forward tonight. I don't have a problem with a work session, but this gentleman is a longtime taxpayer of Mason City. He had property loss, not necessarily to the fault of the city whatsoever, but he did have a loss, there's no doubt about it. And I think we should approve this. This, we're only talking about $1,000. We spend more money on ridiculous lawsuit issues than we do on this. And I think as a good neighbor policy, we should resolve this. It happened last fall.
this type of claim. I think that we have a history of, and I deal directly, a lot of times I end up with these individuals back in my office and we start looking in detail as to what type of claim they had. You start looking at, well, we have a duty to report you the law, but is it our responsibility because we have a role in that that maybe we do want to try?
So in what you're saying, as you made a mistake putting it on last Friday?
No, I don't think so, but I think through some things that other council members, they feel uncomfortable with pursuing it further. And that's what I'm hearing here. I don't have a problem with considering this in the future at all, but I want to make sure, obviously, part of my role is if there are questions of others, I need to make sure that everybody has the information. And that's what they're asking for, more information. So I, I stand behind considering this for a recommendation for approval. But obviously, there are one.
I can support that tonight and the study of the sample approval. And I'll be glad to have the workshops and learn other things that you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Uh, Ms. Marsters?
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm for just moving this forward tonight. I don't have a problem with a work session, but this gentleman is a longtime taxpayer of Mason City. He had property loss, not necessarily to the fault of the city whatsoever, but he did have a loss, there's no doubt about it. And I think we should approve this, this, we're only talking about $1,000. We spend more money on ridiculous lawsuit issues than we do on this. And I think as a good neighbor policy, we should resolve this. It happened last fall. Time to resolve it for the citizen, the good taxpayer, and move forward. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Marsters, anybody else down here? Thanks, Nelson.
Yes, you know, great to have a work session, but no problem with that. But, you know, there's going to be circumstances that arise with huge city government that a policy isn't going to cover everything that comes up through the course of a year or years. I don't know how you have a policy to cover circumstances that it just in my past. I'm not opposed to a work session, but I have a question of whether or not we can ever develop a policy that will cover every situation that comes up in the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Uh, we'll hold Mr. Nelson down. What do you want to comment on?
Well, real quick, Houseman Nelson, I agree. I don't know that we can get a all encompassing policy, but I think the biggest thing that we can do is determine the procedure that we want to follow. If there are certain things that you see as being clear discriminators as that they shouldn't move forward, I'll have that information. So then rather than spending time with council members on items that we clearly do not want to consider because of the nature that they are, you can look at the breadth of the claims that we've had and say, these types of claims, we're not interested in pursuing or hearing. Uh, these types of claims, we would like to have come back or present you a list of the claims that have been denied once a month. And then you decide which ones you would like to pull and have a discussion about. And so we may, it may not be just about what kind of policies or what claims we pay, but also the procedure that we need to follow so that we're doing things in an efficient way and considering the claim that we want to consider.
Ms. Nelson, you can just share your time, Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, just response to that is, you know, I, I voted no when I made Brent quiet. The insurance company said no reimbursement. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, and, and I've talked to city staff. So I, my vote would be, be no, though I will support a work session. It's majority of the council feel that would be beneficial. I will support that.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Just any guys here have a.
Well, I've been, I've talked to staff, I've been out to the house. Uh, I've seen what's happened out there. And, and I think what I like about this is if we move this forward tonight and it got approved, we could set a precedence for past cases and possibly future cases that we haven't even heard about. And that's what makes me a little nervous, like if we move this forward tonight. Uh, I'm in favor of the workshop. I also agree with Mr. Nelson that if we do do this, um, there's probably not an encompassing policy that will cover everything. So I, I do like the idea of following with the staff, insurance companies, and going with their recommendations because it's going to put us in a bind and we're going to be sitting up here going against each other. Um, and I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with that at this point. So I'm going to approve or consent on the workshop and move forward with that at this time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is just noticing I have people contact me. Council members, make sure you pull your mics up by, by your mouths so folks at home can hear. I know folks in here can't, not always at homes. Anybody else on response, Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I'm going to stick to my commitment to Mr. Ritter. It's been a long process. I, I agree with what councilman Marsters and Hickey are saying. You're not going to come up with a plan and solve everything, but, but the solve will know. And I have no problem with having a workshop. But the other thing I want to say though is, hey, Brent, seriously, you couldn't have M W out to us by 5 o'clock Tuesday? When you, I can see that there's been some confidence, a lot of discussion. You put a little heads up to us before the meeting tonight, you know what I mean? I think you would have time to put out a M W saying, hey, we need to pull eight, eight B and approval workshop because there's been some things talked, talked about from my, my colleagues. I don't understand that. Really, I don't. It's kind of, it kind of leaves a guy wondering, and I'm wondering a lot these days.
Well, as far as, as far as the discussion occurred this morning, yes, individuals, council members, they reviewed their fact that having received it on Monday, I ended up getting a call. I was out of the office yesterday and so the issue was brought forward to me this morning. And through the discussion, they felt that there was a desire to postpone this motion a couple of them, and so then we looked forward.
I would like to have that opportunity to talk to Mr. Ritter and tell him what's going on tonight. I think I had another conversation today with someone else, another staff member. It would have been nice to have this communication with Mr. Ritter. Since the staff member had the concerns that they had, they've been over the phone today, Brent, which you're well aware of, I would have really appreciated to have some contact with Mr. Ritter. But thank you. You don't need to explain anything. I understand what you had, I didn't have enough time.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Anybody else down here? Else? Clerk, could you read the motion, please?
Motion is to postpone action to June 7th pending work session.
And that's on eight B, correct? All right. Clerk call a roll.
Silver?
Yes.
Tornquist?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Marsters?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Weaver?
No.
This is a simple motion, the mayor can vote on it, so I'll give a vote to postpone. We'll move on here. Just make the motion carries. Move on here to the action items. Uh, number 17, administrator recommending approval ordinance admitting Title II boards and commission, chapter 12 store preservation commission, section two, organization, paragraph C, in its entirety, and leave paragraph C. Uh, and this is on final. Uh, do we have a motion on the ordinance?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, is there any discussion on this? I think Mr. Marsters, over.
No, my only question would be, has anybody heard anything, any opposition to the full approval on that? I've heard nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Silver, you have a second? Anybody else on this? All right, we've got a motion and a second on the ordinance. Uh, clerk call a roll.
Marsters?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Tornquist?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
All right, ordinance carries. Thank you, council. We're, now we're going to do 19 here in front of 18. Administrator recommending approval resolution order proposed terms be included in agreement for private building line between city and Cargill Kitchen Solutions, 1750 South Benjamin Avenue. Uh, do we have a motion and a second on this?
So move.
Second? All right. Um, and before we take that, I know we have some folks here. Uh, Mr. Willett, please, please speak on behalf of Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Um, I will keep my remarks brief. I am.
Hopefully within five minutes.
You bet. Uh, here to discuss with council the establishment of an urban rural zone tax incentive to help secure what we see as a significant job and capital creating project in Mason City. Uh, you've got a resolution in your packet that describes the project. Uh, but Cargill Kitchen Solutions, formerly Sunny Fresh, would, uh, with this expansion, invest in an expansion estimated at a total of $12.5 million, create at least 20 new jobs in Mason City. Uh, the project would enable Cargill to bring on a new egg processing line and create some additional, uh, capacity there. Of course, Cargill opened at, at the time Sunny Fresh opened in Mason City in March of 2001. Now employs, uh, uh, over 155 employees with the potential to add 20 to that should we secure this expansion. Uh, certainly, the company in its 10 years in Mason City has demonstrated a capacity, a desire to invest in this community. Uh, and we see this as another one of those opportunities. Um, the approximately 3 million of the $12.5 million project is estimated as building expansion costs, which what you're addressing with property tax abatement request, not to exceed $700,000 in value over 10 years. Troy Swanson, who is the plant manager with Cargill Kitchen Solutions, is also here this evening. Uh, he is, should you have him, is, is here to discuss and is, is, is competing to secure this project inside his company, wants to bring it to Mason City. I think we want to have it. Uh, and I, and, and we see this, uh, every project of this size and in the, the condition of the market that we're, uh, competing in as a community is highly competitive. Uh, and, uh, we see this as a, as a real winner for Mason City. And so those are some of the balances of, of my remarks. Uh, if you'd like to hear from Mr. Swanson, I, I think he'd be happy to.
You just hang out right there and then?
You bet.
We'll get the motion in. I, I would just say that this is, Cargill is a wonderful corporate partner in Mason City. I know they just put in a wastewater treatment, uh, facility to expand their capacity. And, uh, they have to be competitive on these projects and we want more of them. Uh, and we want to applaud them, we want to show the companies that we're willing to, uh, step up, uh, as new try group. So, uh, we have a motion, a second. Is there anyone that'd like to make a comment? Mr. Marsters?
Well, I'd just like to thank Mr. Swanson and your company for bringing jobs to Mason City. There's a lot of people as well as us, but citizens who need some jobs that are very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marsters. Anybody else? Ms. Silver?
Um, I was out recently for a groundbreaking and I was very, very impressed with the facility. Uh, thank you so much for the invitation out there. It's great to see what's kept going on. Uh, a lot of great people that work for you, very appreciative for the wages that they make and the stability in the jobs, and we hope it continues in the future. Thanks again.
Thanks, Silver.
Mr. Weaver? Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
How old are you?
36.
Mr. Swanson, you want to come up and run for?
And who's that guy with you, too, that's got the big smile?
Pete, Pete, we're project manager.
Well, thank you.
You want to come on up here before we can go on with Mr. Weaver's question?
And I, I want to say I'm sorry I didn't make it to your ribbon cutting. And I don't do really ribbon cuttings, I only ever been to one because I'm always afraid that if I show up, it'll scare the project away. So I'm thanking you now, but we're this far along, so I appreciate your product and what you do, too. Do you work hand in hand sort of with the distribution over on the next row on 15th Street? Do you get a lot of your product?
We do, we do business with a lot of customers and certainly.
But do you have trucks taking your product over to that distribution side of 15th Street?
Yes.
Because they're busier than, I can't believe how busy the other trucks are. Appreciate your investment in the community. Make sure you tell the Cargill family, we, we appreciate it.
Yep. So.
May I address the council?
Oh, I know that you wanted to. Have you done what, Mr. Weaver?
Maybe, maybe not. I got some time left, but.
Go ahead, take a few minutes.
Good evening, Mayor.
What pause, Mr. Weaver, is that?
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Obviously, Troy Swanson, the plant manager at Cargill Kitchen Solutions. I'd just like to say a few words here. I've been a member of this community for all three years now and I really enjoy living and working in Mason City. As Brent said, uh, our company's been allocated the capital for expansion of one of our further processing lines. The plan here in Mason City is being strongly considered for that expansion. And I am strongly advocating within Cargill and our business to put that expansion right here in Mason City. So I feel we got a tremendous workforce and a great working relationship with the city and the members of the community as well. So I believe this really is a net positive for Cargill and the community of Mason City. And I appreciate you looking at this.
Mayor? We're going to let Mr. Weaver here go for just a few minutes.
I want to tell him his time. He has all the time.
But Silver can say his advantage. Mr. Weaver has borne it.
Still of America.
I'm okay. I, I, I'm, I'm.
Don has to say. Mr. Nelson?
Oh, no, I'm just appreciate the expansion, the job opportunities. I, I was only a member of this city council around in, in 2001. I remember we came before us and, and the, the great wasn't much of a discussion. We, we met and approved all the incentives to get you here. Um, I, I do recall that, uh, one of the determining factors to locate in Mason City was a gentleman who I guess is one of the executives. Positive experience that he had with his horses out to the fairground. He was a horse person. And he was so impressed with Mason City is one of the reasons, or I think the incentives, the main reason, but one of the incentives and why we located your excellent company in Mason City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anybody else want to respond here? Mr. Hickey?
I know we talk about economic development and new jobs all the time. It's our number one priority. And of course, economic development is not always new businesses, but it's also, again, expansionary retention of businesses. And again, it's just like the rest of council members, thank you for your, um, good work. I believe you've done for Mason City, appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else want to respond? All right, Mr. Weaver?